Yeah, this is the form in here.
Do you want to try to fix that before we?
I'd like to welcome everybody to a regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the Secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the Commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the Chair. Roll call please, Sherri.
Chair Zabilla.
Here.
Vice Chair Jagiello.
Here.
Commissioners Merk.
Here.
Quilisi.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Powers is absent.
Commissioner Merk, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the public communications portion of our evening. Public communications is the time set aside during Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the Commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. I don't have any public communications cards. Would anybody like to speak on a matter that's not agendized? No, we're moving on. We have no consent items, so we'll move on to our disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts.
I visited the site on tonight's agenda, but did not speak to anyone, so I had no ex parte contacts.
I also visited the site, had no ex parte contacts.
I visited the site and all I did was introduce myself to the person who looked at me from the door.
I have not been to the site and had no ex parte contact.
I've been to the site and had no ex parte contacts.
And I have been to the site and had no ex parte contacts.
Okay, so we will move on to our discussion item, which is a concept review. CR 17-02 for the remodel and addition of an existing one-story, single-family residence, demolition of a detached shed located in the rear inside yard setback and an attached carport partially located in the side yard setback. The addition spaces include an enclosed one-car garage, powder room, den, study, and a second-story master suite at 906 Mercer Avenue, Sussers Parcel 022-008-2120. The general plan designation for the property is medium-density residential, three to four dwelling units per acre. The zoning classification property is single-family residential. Property owner Jesse and Libby Hawkins, applicant Shawn Foster. Like to hear from staff, please.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. For the record, I am Matthew Winiger. I'm a contract planner for the city, and I'm sitting in for Ms. Wold, who is on leave at this time. As the Chair has indicated, this is a concept review related to potential remodel of an existing residence, single-family residence, that's 906 Mercer Avenue. The proposal, there are plans in your packet, which illustrate the proposal, but the proposal is to raise an existing portion of the structure, which includes a nonconforming protrusion into both the side yard and rear yard setback, and to reconstruct a new addition, which would replace that existing structure with a new single-car garage and an addition of living area to the existing single-story structure. So the proposal, as will be explained further by the applicant this evening, essentially would replace a portion of an existing structure that's being demolished. The proposal would still result in an encroachment into the required side yard setback. The proposal would honor the required 25-foot rear yard setback, but there would be a minor two-foot actual encroachment into the required 12-foot side yard on the south side of the property. The applicant is also proposing a one-car garage where the code would normally require a two-car garage, and is proposing to meet the ordinance through the screening of an additional parking space, which is permitted for consideration by the city code. So, in summary, the proposal would reduce the degree of nonconformity with the existing code. I should point out that the site itself is actually nonconforming in terms of its size and in terms of the minimum amount of square feet required in the R1 Zone District. And with that, staff would be happy to try and answer any questions. As I indicated, the applicant is present and has a presentation to share with the Commission and is also available to answer questions.
Mr. Winiger, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
We have an elevation, we have elevations, but we don't have height limit or site coverage.
That is correct. I don't believe we have that information. Perhaps the applicant can provide that. I don't know either the answer to either questions.
Okay, okay, so I'll ask them. And then, do you know, does the, I know that part of what we're, part of what we're considering is what to do with the second car, so, is it, what does the code say about, I couldn't find anything, about putting that second car potentially in that side yard setback?
Certainly. The code allows that the second required space can be permitted, allowed outside, provided it's screened from the public street, and it's not, does not encroach into the front yard setback. So, we haven't specifically measured to find out. I think that that's a consideration for the Commission and would something that the applicant would have to solve in order to meet the city code requirement.
But that's an option?
It is an option, yes it is.
Okay, okay, that's the only question I had. Commissioner Quilisi?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Winiger. I call your attention to page two of four of the staff report, Table One, and the notes there, too. Note two says fence heights would be conditioned to be consistent with maximum heights found in 10-2.805, which I tagged there on the code for you. And I think that's three feet high for the first 40 feet back from the street, or the first, well, it varies by zone, I guess, 20 feet or 40 feet back from the street. Oh, here it shows 20 feet, okay. But the drawing, and perhaps this is a question for the applicant, the artist conception of the west elevation, not the drawing, but the colored picture, makes that north-side fence look more like seven feet than the five that's on the drawing, and certainly more than the three that's allowed in the code. And so I'm just wondering if I understand the code correctly on that. I know the entire fence is not shown, which is on the next-to-last page of the submitted drawings, I think.
Correct, I think.
It looks more like seven feet than the five shown on the drawing, and even the five, I think, is higher than it should be.
That may be, and I apologize that we didn't do a specific analysis on the fence heights. Again, this is a concept-level review, so I apologize for lack of detail, but that is something that would be looked at and taken into consideration by both staff and the applicant. So, I would direct that specific question to the applicant to determine if they have that information at this time.
On note three, it says the applicant's suggesting a minor variance associated with 10-2.2503 for a reduction of 10% of the standards, and I'm not familiar with 10-2.2503, but that refers to the side setback, and I thought that 10-2.1303F would apply here, since the existing carport is already within about six feet of the property line. And 1303F says if you're building no closer to the property line or the right-of-way line with the new construction than the existing or prior setback, then you're okay. And in this case, the prior setback would be the carport, and that's about six feet, and we're talking about 10 feet plus.
Correct, that is correct.
Okay.
So, the minor variance is permitted by the code, allows basically a 10% variation.
What's 2503, 10-2.2503? That's what's referred to here in the staff report. I'm sorry, I didn't look that one up.
2503, I did just look at that. 2503 refers to the types of variances that are permitted.
Oh, types of variances, okay. But the actual standard is in 804, 805, and 1303. Yeah, okay.
That's correct, and it's our, it's staff's determination that this proposal is not eligible for a state-authorized variance, because there's a lack of hardship situation here. This is based in an elective modification, but would be eligible for the minor variance that is permitted under city code.
Okay, okay. Item number four says details or standards, and this has to do with site coverage, height limit, and landscaping. Landscaping, I could understand, that's a way off in the future, and perhaps the applicant can help us with the height limit and the site coverage, but it looked to me like they were okay. I'm just curious why there's no data. And then, four and five, notes four and five, again, there's no screening in the plan, so it's hard to tell. Maybe the applicant can help us with that.
Yes, and again, this is concept level. They'll have to provide that information if this project goes forward in terms of the height limits and the lot coverage and so on.
Okay, okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
You bet. So I think it's a good time to have our applicant come up and fill us in on their plan.
Good evening, all. My name is Shawn Foster. I was, I am the project designer and agent to the applicants, and I want to take a step back, and we can get into the questions in a bit here. I just wanted to start kind of where the genesis of this project is coming from. For those of you that have visited the site, 906 Mercer, it's located on the east side of Mercer, which is unique to the neighborhood and really to housing in Ojai, because it butts up to Openfield. It's previously been an orchard. I believe right now it's being converted into a working farm. But east of Mercer, the next parallel street over would be Gridley, so you see a transition from more dense neighborhoods to, you know, larger estate properties, ranch agricultural. And in doing so, it's also, the property sits in relative proximity to the kind of the rim of the Ojai Valley. It's kind of, it's really impactful to the design and what we were trying to achieve with the design. It was one of the major informers in that sense. So when the clients came to me, there was an obvious need to expand living space. They're a young family, three children, with the oldest being, I think, seven years old. So, the existing residence is about 1,200 square feet. It's been modified and manipulated over the years. I believe at the time of, that they obtained the property, there's some illegal living space that they had removed as part of the conditions of the sale. And kind of the resultant is the interior space of the house is rather inefficient, chopped up, so there's a need to kind of, kind of clean the situation up, in a sense, make it more livable, especially for a young family. And the major aspect of their program was not only to add space, but keep that connection and really build on that connection to the exterior. So that's kind of where the design is coming from. With respects to the property as it sits now, you mentioned there's a detach, I think it's a storage, may have been a carport at one point, that sits in the rear and the side yard setback, which is a theme on Mercer Avenue. There seems to be, at the time of construction of this neighborhood, if you walk up and down the block, you'd see a lot of detached carports, garages, sitting in that rear side yard setback. I'd say it's, that's rather the precedent, rather than, rather than out of the ordinary. And in addition, as we stated, the existing carport is an extension of the roof planes that cover the residence itself, and the support columns sit at about the five foot, about five feet off the property line, so encroaching into that 12-foot setback considerably. And part of the design was to kind of clean up some of these situations. The storage is kind of a dilapidated unit in the back that needs to be remedied anyways, and then part of the architectural solution was to clean up the carport as well. The existing width, if we were to try to enclose that carport straight out, doesn't really conform to a two-car garage width, so it made sense to kind of work in spirit with the municipal code and provide a single-car garage and, as I say, work with the spirit of the code with respects to the setbacks. We still would like to provide that. The code says five feet one side, 12 feet the other side, for access. So I think our reasoning there is we can still provide access while encroaching into that side yard setback a bit. So, I suppose getting into, I can explain the architectural approach, and I put together a little fly-through. I think the elevations are pretty stagnant, so I put together a little fly-around, so you can kind of get the context of the architecture and some of the materiality that we're proposing. We can, it's just a quick little video, and you can go through there. I could continue to go while it's playing, but the neighborhood itself is really eclectic, especially the street in Mercer. I wouldn't say there's one dominant architectural style. This house in particular, it kind of lends itself to kind of this farmhouse agrarian style with the extended porches. So we wanted to work with the existing structure as much as possible. The main characteristics that I really liked was this, the existing chimney. Now, this graphic doesn't have the curves totally detailed, but these corner windows are existing, and then the fireplace chimney are kind of unique, kind of lending it to that farmhouse feel. So what we wanted to do is kind of embrace that, improve upon it, and then also introduce some contemporary compositions and some detailing, so you get a sense of some more, an update to the architecture in itself. We're proposing like a board, traditional materials, like board-on-board siding, and mixed in with some stucco. We're going to utilize existing windows as much as possible and the existing structure and the shell. And, again, the main thing was to design to connect to the exterior. And in a sense, adding the addition space is relatively, I'd say it's efficient, the way we're reworking the interior. I have on the first level about 300 square feet of addition livable space, which includes a den, a powder room. And then, the second level is about 390 square feet of a master suite and an 80-foot, square-foot balcony. And with that, I would maybe go over some of these questions that we brought up at the beginning here.
Height, height and lot coverage?
So, I had some sections in there. The overall height from existing grade is about 18 feet, 19 feet now, I'm sorry, to top of the ridge of the second-story addition to existing grade underneath. I think the, is the code 2025? Okay. There is, I want to circle back to the setback issue, because I think that's kind of the crux of where we are in the design, and it's really going to dictate where we take it from here. So, with respects to the five and 12, what I submitted, just as a discussion point, was I, I had met with city staff and kind of with a proposal similar to this, and we talked about some of these issues with respects to the setback, to the setbacks, excuse me, where they informed me about the 10%, the possibility to request a 10% encroachment and studied that code section. And that's what I put on the paper you have, and what that gives us is an interior dimension for that proposed single-car garage of about 11 and 1/2 feet, which it's to code standard, but it's not, it's not a really a realist, it's very tight, let's say that, for modern-day vehicles and three young children, it's very tight. So, as I said, kind of working in spirit with the code of providing access, what we would, what we propose to do, or what I'm asking your recommendation on, is kind of a benchmark to kind of move forward with the design. It'd be fantastic to get up to three feet into the setback. That said, you know, 30 inches, 36 inches would be fantastic. It'd make it a much more viable garage and comfortable for the users, but it's up for discussion, I suppose. And then, second car parking, did kind of study it a little bit more. I think we can potentially, we have options, as mentioned, the side yard, if it's shielded is an option. And then, I think we can potentially fit like a covered trellis in the front yard in front of the garage, so in a sense, it's almost a double-loaded, single garage, double-loaded parking situation, but.
You mean tandem parking?
I'm sorry, yeah, stacked.
Okay. But not both covered?
Well, we could potentially cover. You know, I could study it architecturally, how it makes sense, but we could maybe do a trellis structure out in front of the garage and put some sort of covering over that.
Okay.
Now, depth, required depth for covered parking is, if I understand, is about 20 feet? Is that the case? Because I have, from face of the garage to front yard setback, I have 18. So it would be.
Look at that, yeah.
Okay.
18 feet, 18 feet in front of the garage door and to the setback.
To the front yard setback, yeah.
So there's, I'm sorry, go ahead. So, we're sort of talking about two different things here. One is, now you're talking about tandem parking, which is a different issue than where you, because the screening is really kind of the main thing that I'm seeing, that if the second thing goes away.
I'm just going through my options, basically.
Right, okay.
So, I think the screening is probably preferred on our behalf, without getting, studying it too much, but there, we have options.
So then, so then, if that second, if that allowance was made for that second uncovered space, and it went in the side setback, and it were screened, then, and you want the garage to be bigger? You'd like the garage to be bigger?
Yes.
You're talking like a dealing eight, nine feet from the setback?
Well, I think my reason, my thinking is, provide access on the side yard setback. We'll stay out nine feet off the property line. That's kind of consistent with what a parking space would be required to be.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But that's kind of, that's kind of my starting point. That would be best-case scenario.
Right. But nine feet, you can accomplish, you could accomplish putting the car there and screening it from the front?
I believe so, yeah.
With the gate, with the gate. Yeah, so what's the inside of the garage again, the width?
As drawn, and what I have drawn incorporates the 10% encroachment.
Encroachment, right.
It's about 11 foot six.
Inside dimension?
Inside dimension. I have 11 and 7 3/8s dimension on the plan.
And so that, and then what's the exact dimension then on the setback to the wall, to the garage wall?
That would be 12 feet minus 10%, so 1.2 feet, or 1.2 feet's like.
10 foot six inches.
Like 14 inches.
So, 10 foot.
So, that's the setback from the property line in the drawing.
Yes.
From the property line to the structure.
Property line to the structure.
What is it, 10 foot? I do the math, but I'm burned out.
It's about, it's about 10, 9.
10, 9, thank you.
Unofficial.
So that's what you would be trying to utilize on that side setback, but you want to encroach now, and then, sorry, I'm repeating a lot of things, but I'm getting my head around it.
Sure.
So, and now, but you're asking 11, 6 is minimal, and you would prefer?
We would prefer to, sorry, let me do a quick math. We prefer, if I got 13 feet interior dimension, that's adding, that's adding.
A foot and five.
A foot five, so then we're left over with.
You're taking that out of the 10 foot eight, or whatever it is.
10 foot nine.
10, 9. You're taking that 1.1 foot 5 inches out of the 10, 9 that you have on the current drawing.
Correct.
So you're down to, what, eight and 1/2 feet?
Nine feet, nine plus.
I'm not sure you can get a car in alongside it.
You can. We have, we've had garages, garage doors eight foot wide, and that's possible.
Oh, garage door, yeah.
Well, but the garage door is the width, you know, and then all you need is, because the.
Room to open the door on the side.
It depends on the size of vehicle, of course, but a lot of these smaller vehicles, like if you had a Prius, you'd have no problem with a nine-foot area. It'd be tight, it'd be really tight, but you'd be able to do it.
But a parking stall is typically going to be eight or nine feet, depending, you know, with the 20-foot length, but maybe in this case, it's going to be 18 because of the setback issue.
And they're just going to, and obviously, they're going to have to live with it, so if they, if they were to move in a direction of narrowing that tandem parking area, you know, they're going to have to get a car that's going to work, because they're going to want to pay the price on that one, because they really have nowhere to go, right?
It also needs to be a screen from the adjacent parcel, and that would really need to be.
That's a fence.
On the, on the south property line?
Yeah. There's fence and planting there already, if I recall.
Correct, correct. Now, I'm sorry, I'm a little mixed up on the numbers right now. What I have on the plan is kind of my baseline.
Right.
And what I'm asking for from this point, let's throw, let's throw this, let's throw this 10% out, and what I would ask for is about a two-and-1/2-foot encroachment into that side yard setback.
Okay, then you have to do the math for me real quick.
So that would, that would.
So I'd want inside dimensions of the garage, and then the setback dimension from the outside of the garage to the property line.
Okay, so it'd be, well.
You said 11, 7, and 3/8s inside on the drawing.
11, 6 on the inside right now, per drawing.
I'm sorry, I thought he said 11, 7, 3/8.
Okay, so if we did 30 inches encroachment, that gives us exactly nine feet from property line to face of.
And what's the inside of the garage?
The inside dimension would be.
13 feet, 8 inches?
I think it's about 13 feet.
Yeah.
Unofficial math, right, on the spot.
This is all unofficial, as you know. Nothing is being approved, nothing is being written in stone. I'm always, it's all a concept. Commissioner Corbin?
Well, it's probably, it's probably more realistic to assume the parking will go in front of the garage than on the side there.
Well, that's, that's one of the things that we're meant to be guiding him on, is because he's getting a, he's asking for forbearance on two-covered parking places.
Right, but he offered to cover it with a trellis.
It needs to be screened.
In the front, in the front, front of the house needs to be screened as well.
Well, that's what it says, it says, does it not, Mr. Winiger?
Do we have any discretion on that issue?
Required residential parking, should an enclosed, unenclosed space be approved with visual screening? Where was the original?
What's, what's the meaning of enclosed? Is a carport enclosed?
Not, not usually.
Okay.
Requirements for enclosed garages may be waived, provided the area devoted to parking is visually screened from adjacent parcels.
1406D, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And.
So if they have a side screening from lot to lot, that's required, that.
It seems to be, yeah. I mean, we're giving.
That's what I was looking at the house here on.
Right, I mean, it's a gimme because it's supposed to be two covered, two covered spaces. So if there's a gimme, then the gimme is, as I understand it, it needs to be screened, which I think is totally doable.
Screened on the side, not necessarily from the street level?
It says visually screened from adjacent parcels.
Adjacent parcels, adjacent means sides.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, so that's not from the street.
No, correct.
And it's already screened.
It is right now, there's planting all over that lot.
Google's giving me a good image of it right now. Technology.
Well, and tandem parking is just another thing that you're going to have to, that puts you in a position to have to ask for something else. Because tandem parking doesn't, I mean, that's just another thing that, you know, you're putting yourself having to get that then as well.
That requires commission approval.
Right.
Now, I mean, you see the constraints of the lot and with the design proposed, I think I'm going to have to ask for.
Depends on if you go to the side, if the tandem parking, which I think architecturally fits better.
The tandem or on the side?
On the side, on the side, excuse me, on the side.
To the side.
Yes.
Or around the side, widen the driveway and allow a place to pull in.
One at a time, please.
Yeah, so I'm thinking that the obvious architectural choice is the side, which also gives us more leeway to work, gives you some leeway to work.
And it's a balance between what I have left over.
Yeah, it depends on the width of the garage. Now you're arguing those points and encroachment, right? Into an already non-conforming.
That's where I was hoping to kind of get at least some direction to kind of work the design.
And what is it, Commissioner Quilisi brought up the point of that fence in the front coming out, jetting out in the front. What, why, what's the point of that barrier there? The screen, the screen fence? Yeah, yeah, just curious.
So currently, off to the left of the home there is, is a bedroom that's actually currently screened in with some hedging. And I'm just, the idea there was to match the hedging. It's also a bedroom and a patio that exits directly there. So it's kind of providing privacy for those bedrooms, creates a little courtyard off that room. There was mention about the height, I'm totally flexible with working on.
Says five foot on the plan, but on there, it's like, it's almost the height of the door. So it's at least seven feet tall.
That might be a perspective thing, but I think it was five feet, five feet off the slab there. But then the side slopes towards the street, so yeah, correct, I understand.
Right, it's very tall there, okay.
Hold on, it's five feet on the plan.
Right, okay.
Sean, did you comment on site coverage?
You know, I haven't run numbers other than, I could do some quick math.
But you're within the 35%?
Uh, yeah, I believe so, yeah.
It looks like it.
What's a 10,000 foot lot, square foot lot?
Right.
And how square footage is?
Uh, the existing house, 1,200, and then the added would be 300 plus the garage. So, what do I have for the garage? Another 300, so 18. So say 1,800, yeah.
You're way under, okay, cool.
Well, I think our outstanding issues, I mean, I think the thing that you're most needing in guidance on is whether there's any kind of, what is the word I'm looking for? Consideration for, first of all, eliminating the requirement for two covered spaces, where that car might go and how it might be screened. Those to me seem like.
Encroachment into the.
Right, the encroachment, that's my, right, right. So utilizing Article 13 to encroaching to that side setback, without putting too fine a point, some clarity maybe from everybody as to, to what degree it would be allowed to encroach and where that second car would be and how it might be screened. I think those are kind of, if anybody has, without, obviously, we're not putting a fine point on this, but if anybody wants to sort of weigh in on where they are with those issues, then.
I can weigh in, I think it's an excellent drawing. I mean, it's a beautiful house. I think you did a great job incorporating those, that kind of contemporary ranch, second story thing, it's a very nice look. And I like it just the way it is. As far as parking goes, really, I think once you do the side yard setback fence, if it's not even already there, you know, that's easy barrier. Putting a gate there to cover, to make it, you don't need to have a front. You don't even need a gate there. So you need, so just having that side parking there. And really, I personally, I don't think it matters to us whether it's nine feet or 10 foot six. It really matters to the owner. I mean, the encroachment issue is the same, we have to approve that either way. And with cars going smaller than larger in general, I'm okay with the nine feet. That's my opinion.
Commissioner Nolan?
Well, I'm in agreement. I like the project, I think the architecture is great. I think you're improving the lot, because it is a non-conforming lot and, you know, initially, it didn't have a garage. And now you're actually adding one and there really isn't enough room to do a two car garage. I think the, having the side, the additional parking on the side there, as long as it's screened, makes sense. I would be okay with it.
Commissioner Quilisi?
I would suggest you look back at the code at 10-2.1303F. I think that allows you to build as, to build as close to the property line as the current carport is.
Okay.
Which, which takes away any need for a variance. You still have a problem with the second parking space.
Absolutely, yeah.
And then I have one other question and I'm not sure to whom to direct it, maybe staff. I have heard two words here tonight referring to parking spaces, enclosed and covered, which it sounds to me like both have a roof and enclosed has walls as well. Is that, is that the sense of the code?
But in the staff report, they refer to unenclosed. If you go to page three of four on the first paragraph, it's probably the last sentence. It says, you know, they're just stating should in, it's unenclosed. So a carport typically has a covered roof on it.
It's covered, but not enclosed.
It's not enclosed.
And the requirement is for enclosed. No? See, parking says two covered spaces.
Right, but neither, right now, the second one is not proposed to be covered.
But this option for the second one is for unenclosed.
But, I'm thinking then theoretically, one could have a garage, regular construction as you've shown it on your drawings, but a little wider. And then if you had a carport adjacent to the garage, then you'd have the two covered spaces required by the code. And you don't have to ask for a variance there.
He's not going to ask for variance anyway. He's not going to go the variance route anyway, probably, staff isn't recommending that. They're recommending they go Article 13, but he still needs to, he doesn't even have to, potentially does not have to cover it at all if it's, you know, he can put it in that side and potentially just screen it.
Okay.
I just, yeah, architecturally, I'm not sure. I want another carport attached to the side of it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, the carport would then be in the setback, right, right.
I like it without it.
The carport would be in the setback and it would be closer than the current carport. So that would be a different variance or waiver or something, yeah, okay. Okay, other than that, I like, I like the whole package. I think it'll be a very good addition to the neighborhood.
Anybody else? Commissioner Corbin?
I agree, I think it's a nice project. I appreciate that you put a nice looking garage door on it, since the garage usually is not a very attractive thing. So, good job for that.
The door is not necessarily written in stone, just remember. But so if you say you like the door, that might be something you want to share.
I do like the garage door.
So you like the sort of frosted sort of, what is it that you like about it?
I like the fact that it's not an ugly aluminum slab.
Like the grid?
That it's a nice architectural piece. And I think that that's facing the street and that's really important. Which is one of the issues with two covered spaces when people put really ugly garages up there and then, I'd rather see the car. And I'd say, you know, do a little investigation in terms of how comfortable somebody might be actually pulling into that side space.
Yeah, I've been in it recently, in an 11 foot, 11 and a half foot wide garage and it's, it's very tight. I wouldn't recommend it with young children or a normal sized car.
The side space.
Yeah, it's tight, that's, and that's kind of the crux of discussion.
Where the big car is going to go. You're going to have one small car here, because I don't think you're going to have two large vehicles. You're not going to get out of the other one at the nine foot if you increase that, so. They'll have the family car and then they'll have the sports car.
Anybody else? I also, no, Commissioner Merk, no? Okay.
I haven't said anything, so, we'll see.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a nice design, I think it meets all the design criteria. I actually would like to see, I'd be more inclined to, like on the side and screened from the front, really kind of how you have it drawn here.
Yeah.
I mean, how you have drawn.
I think that's likely to be incorporated.
That finishes it really nicely. But otherwise, yeah, very interesting design and meets all our criteria from what I can see. So, good job. Is that clear?
I think so, in summation, kind of, it's a, potential to go up to nine foot off that line is there, it's just, everyone's got to be comfortable with it. And when I say everyone, I mean the clients and the user as well.
I could see that.
Side, that fence if covered from the, the street, you know, that having a motorized gate too, that can work, you know, make that work and open up, pull right in there. You can get up, get out of that car, get into the garage. That could be a very nice parking area, if done right.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Any other questions?
I think, I think I have good direction now.
Okay, good.
Take it to the next level.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay. Okay, then we are just going to move on to our informational items. Mr. Winiger, our future agenda items?
Yes, we have, for your May, your first meeting in May, I think we have two items tentatively scheduled. I don't recall what they are at the moment.
Today, one of the planners asked if a complete streets item could be added.
Oh, yes.
Because it doesn't need to be legally.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
That may be one of the items.
Okay. Remains to be seen, I guess, what that means. I also see that we've got potentially the second unit ordinance coming back for just.
That is definitely on for May 3rd.
The teeny tiny piece and then 311 North Montgomery.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and then reminding everybody, we have a joint meeting with city council at 6:00 PM on May 9th. And then the erstwhile museum gates may be back on the 17th.
8:15 Libby got added to May 17.
We don't have that on our agenda just to talk about. But, yeah, we might, we might want, that's a good point, Commissioner Corbin, maybe we should put on our agenda for May 3rd what we might like to chat about on May 9th. Okay. Topic usually, right, but. Okay, anything else you'd like to share, Mr. Winiger? Otherwise, I'll just move on to our planning commission committee reports.
Nothing further from me, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioner Corbin, would you like to enlighten us about the April 11th city council meeting?
Sure. The city council meeting from April 11th, some of the highlights. Make sure I get this correct. There was a water report from Angela at the beginning. And one of the interesting things about that was that, oh, sorry. One of the interesting things was, he discussed the fact that there was an alternative path. There was an alternative path for the water tie-in. And there's about a three mile gap from where the water ties in and goes into Ventura until it might reach the 30 inch pipe that takes it up to Lake Cassidus. And it seems that neither Ventura nor Cassidus has really brought that issue to the table of how the water gets to Ojai. And so it was suggested that the city council, and I think I saw it on the next agenda meeting, that they actually request a quote for what was entailed with that. But one of the issues, I guess, is that Ojai doesn't have any jurisdiction to build anything in Ventura. So that, that's another issue. But the other alternative discussed was that Santa Barbara apparently is interested in plugging in to state water in Carp and that perhaps that might be an alternate route for us to look at as well. So that was the water thing. There were a number of things discussed. One was the cannabis ordinance and how the applicants might be vetted, how many applicants there might be. And was pretty much decided not to use a lottery system, but to try and get the best possible applicant that they could. I think it was three applicants for each type of license that at this point was agreed upon, see how that goes. And then, once we know what we're doing, we could add some more. The most sort of contentious or convoluted issue seemed to be the museum gates. And it seemed that, it pointed out how overly complicated the procedure and the protocol can get for moving forward on a project. And it was requested that the, I guess it's been going on for two years now, it was requested that the art commission and the historical commission look at the redesign of the gates jointly so that that would make this a little more expedient, rather than taking it to one and then taking it to the other. There was, but what made it complicated was this whole protocol that the representative from the arts commission went through about how they look at a project and how they're different legs to the group and how who should look at it. And I think at the end of the day, city council just requested that they figure out who's going to look at it and do it together so that it would take the least amount of time possible and the project could move forward. And those were some highlights.
Thank you for those highlights. I don't have any other reports, so I will invite city council liaison, Randy Haney, to come on up, tell us what a great job we did.
Hello, commissioners. So you expressed the going ons at the council meeting exactly as I saw them. Just a bunch of running around with our heads cut off. Sometimes I feel we're in disarray up there, but I know we're not. I know deep down inside that we're, we have movement and it's moving forward. It's just every now and then we get a little sidetracked on the, on some. It's just every now and then we get a little sidetracked on the, on some issues. The water issue is probably the biggest one, the fact that, however you want to call it, but I believe the Cassidus Municipal Water District and the City of Ventura colluded to not put us in the state water tie-in study. Maybe that has to play into the fact that they're negotiating for a new five-year program on their water allocations and how they're going to be funded, or how they're going to fund those, the City of Ventura and Cassidus. So there's a lot of moving parts, that's why we're putting together that water board, because, to be honest with you, none of us in this room and none of us in this community that sit on commissions or sit on council have the time to actually get on top of that. And Angelo has been doing an excellent job, and Larry Yee is a very smart, intelligent guy, I think he sits on a state water board right now, so we have smart people, let's put them on it, and let's let them do what they need to do, bring back the information to us, and then let us act appropriately. So that's a good thing. I thought you guys, again, deliberated very, very well. I think the, it was interesting, I was looking at the presenter, and not necessarily having facts in front of him to be able to give you square footages, and what percent of 1.9 is less than 1.6, and I was saying, that's probably a lot on the front end to come up with, but down the road, I'm sure he'll have those, those answers for you, so...
He's an architect. I went to architects' school, right? Right, John, remember that? We have to do math on the fly, man.
I think everyone on this commission, including, and everyone here does math on the fly, I mean, I can tell you right now, it's in my checking account, you know, to the penny, but I'm trying to think if there's anything else. I don't, like I said, the state water tie-in is critical to this community, and the fact that we're still in a drought, the fact that we are the epicenter of this drought in the state of California. We're going to have the new landscape ordinance come up next, the next council session, so that'll be an interesting discussion and debate. I'm not quite sure how that's going to impact the small residential owner in this community moving forward, so that's, those are going to be, my questions are going to be asked to staff regarding that. Commercial projects, large projects over 2,500 square feet, I don't have any problems with what we're doing, but for the small residential owner, if we really want them to be able to comply to sound water practices, we need to think about how unrestricted we can be, or how helpful we can be to help them achieve that, and I don't know if this package helps them. So I think it's a good thing, and I'm going to support it, obviously, but my concern is how it impacts half of this community, which is, you know, houses, residential homes like myself. Yeah, so I think that's it. Do you guys have any questions for me?
You've probably spoken with Tom Ash?
Yes.
And, and he's explained to you how in San Diego County, water is allotted to residential customers, and it's based on how many people live in the house, and how much square footage, and what kind of landscape they have, what's appropriate and what's not, and that seems really logical and like a very good approach. A little bit better than you get a certain percentage of what you used in 2013, so...
Yeah, I think there's a lot of, I think it's, I think his process is tiered, some type of tiered rating, and that's what it includes, is, you know, size of the lot, number, you know, number of people living on it. I don't, Cassidus Municipal Water District is not championing that, and I don't think they want to, I think, and I think everyone in the water business in this county doesn't want something like that, and for the life of me, I don't know why. We need to treat water as what it is, it's precious. It's a resource, and we need to think about it, and how we're going to utilize it for here on out. I'm drawing a blank on where I was, but it was the first time that I actually heard someone start talking about conjunctive use for the county, and it might have been at, it wasn't Ventura County Government, it was at the Ventura County Transportation, the commission I sit on there, but they actually talked for the first time, I heard someone bring up the fact that we all need to be looking at water in our region, and how we're going to help one another achieve success, and because if you go to any of these other cities or any of these other agencies, it's all about them, it's not about us. So it's, that was the first time I actually heard it. All right, welcome. Yes, Steve?
Thank you, if I may, just a couple of quick things.
Sorry. To the extent that you have some influence with the Historic Preservation Commission, I'd like to have someone suggest to them that they agendize the house at 402 North Blanche. In our first January meeting, we were prepared to approve it. Our second January meeting, rather than approve the design, we recommended that the HPC take a look at the whole project first. It's been about three months. I talked to Brian Aiken last week after the City Council meeting, and he said, so far as he knew it, was not yet agendized. So if we can do something about that, I think that would be good. The homeowner's been sitting there for three months without any possibility of moving, of movement.
Well, let me answer that real quick, just not, you know, let's think about what we were talking about, HPC and the Arts Commission and these gates.
Yep.
I think what we do is we get a little convoluted in, in issues, and it seems, it seems to me originally those gates were sent to one specific group, because it is HPC's...
Formerly their jurisdiction, yeah.
So how we get from there over to here, and then how to figure that out, that's another story for another day, but here we are again, I'm not sure if HPC has the jurisdiction to review that house. If they are, then do it. If they aren't, then say so and move on, and that's, again, that's where we're at, is, and that's why we're in limbo. So I don't know if, if planning, if staff has to come up with the declaration, or maybe the homeowners need to come in and get a declaration, I'm not sure, but I do know this much, is three months is too long for someone to make a decision.
Okay. A second quick question. I came in a couple of minutes late for the City Council meeting that you gave us the highlights of so well, and I was curious about this alternate route for hooking to the state water project. The number I remember was seven miles from Somas to the north side of the Santa Clara River. Somehow we've shortened that to three miles now, and I'm really...
No, actually, they shortened, they did four and took away the three, and that three was the tie-in from the Saticoy to West Ventura.
Now I'm more confused.
So, so our, so this, so they can get wa, they, they have two 30-inch...
From Somas?
Right.
And three miles is from the end of the pipe?
No, actually, that three miles was a part of the original seven. They've decided to only do a study on the four that impacts them, because they're doing in conjunction to this state tie-in, they're already doing 30, two 30-inch water lines to the west side.
I do remember that.
So that, so they're trying to, again, save money, which is in the best interest of the city and county, I understand that.
Sure.
But at the same time, what that, what is that, how does that impact, again, us? The, I call it the 33 corridor, you know, the west, west side of Ventura, it impacts us greatly. And then, I thought you were going to talk about the Santa Barbara tie-in. Santa Barbara's been, Santa Barbara has a 30-inch trunk line to Carpinteria. What they're looking to do is to bring it from Carpinteria and tie in to, again, the west tie-in, and now we've got a loop system. Ask Ms. Nolan, she'll tell you right that, an irrigation, a loop system is by far the best way to manage.
That's more than seven miles.
Yeah, so, but it's the idea that if you have the infrastructure, now you can take water from any part of the state that water's available from. If you're limited to one specific area, that's what you're limited to. If we did a loop, or we could, you know, I just think it's, again, a win if the, if the community, the people in our community, and I'm not talking Ojai, I'm talking about the county, are willing to invest, because this, again, I don't think this drought's ever going to go away, I think it's just going to be a continuum from here on in, so... And we're the only community that can't develop. Think about that. We have no place to build housing tracks, we have no place to do any type of development. You look at the county, you look at Santa Paula, you look at Fillmore, you look at Ventura, Oxnard Plains, I mean, everyone's got an opportunity to develop except us. We're, and as a real estate...
Unless we annex.
We are landlocked and, and boxed out, or boxed in, I guess.
Boxed in, yeah.
One other thing I wanted to bring up, though, we, we asked Mayor Johnson to reinsert the first meeting of the month, the commission liaison to come and speak, and we've been kind of lax on that for the last couple of months, and a couple people came at the last council meeting, wanted to speak, and then we had a brew off over allowing them to speak, and it was, again, it's a practice that we've had, it's important that the chair come and speak, if the chair can't make it, the vice chair come, but someone come from the commission, someone from every commission needs to come on the first council meeting of the month and talk about what you're doing, how you're doing it, more importantly, what your needs are. If you have confusion, if you have something that needs to be dealt with, instead of letting it fester, bring it up, and let's air it out, and let's figure it out. But we've, we've asked for that to come, to come again, and to make sure that it's, you know, on the, at the beginning of the council session, not at the end, and that we, that we do listen to you. You guys are very important. I remember when I was on Recreation and Parks, in the beginning, you don't think you are, but the reality is, you are. You're, this is where citizens can come, and again, talk about planning and planning issues in this community, and do it in a manner that's not as intimidating as coming before council. So, all right.
Thank you. And if there's nothing else, we go to the order, we are adjourned.